A October ninth, uh, October regular school board meeting. Welcome to any visitors and to those folks at home. At this time, we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Williamson and our invocation by Dr. Tally.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the clear sea of justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come. Pray, God, that you would remember our community, especially those overseas right now in both wars. Uh, because you said in your word, there would be wars and rumors of wars. We just pray for protection for those people, especially our citizens from America who are abroad. If they might return to St. Lamont, now God, we pray to bless this, uh, school board meeting. Thank you for what you're doing, our community. Thank you for October fest and the growth. God, we just pray to continue to help this board make decisions that would be put better meant by young people and community at large. We pray to recover us with your blood, with your love, bless those who have lost loved ones, and continue to strengthen us. These blessings were added. Good praying to this day.
Do we have any registered speakers?
No.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we would like to welcome Ms. Sharon Shepherd, Deputy Director of the Chamber of Commerce for our monthly community focus.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having invited to come this evening. Um, as you said, I'm Sharon Shepherd. I'm Deputy Director of the Martinsville Henry County Chamber of Commerce. But, um, with that position, I also have the pleasure of being the Executive Director of the Chamber's Education Foundation, which is, um, I'm gonna speak on this evening. So, um, the Education Foundation has been in existence since two thousand and six, and we are an approved charitable organization, nonprofit 501(c)(3), designated by the IRS. So, anything that is donated to us is tax exempt. The Education Foundation was launched to bring, um, to broaden, excuse me, to broaden the organization's outreach in raising private funds for its education and leadership development initiatives. So, the mission of the Education Foundation is to raise private funds to foster partnerships, leadership and leadership opportunities through education. So, we do this as far as our funding. We have two fundraisers each year, and then we also have, um, donations. So, our three fund, our two fundraisers are the Tour de Scholar Charity Bike Ride, which we always do the first August in, excuse me, the first Saturday in August. I know Travis is someone that has, um, has written in this and supported this, um, I think pretty much every year. We appreciate that. Then we also have Golfing for Education, which we always do in November, and that's coming up on November the ninth. So, that's, those are our two main primary fundraisers, and then, like I said, we do accept donations. So, right now, our three, um, primary programs are the Partnership and Excellence Grants or PI grants. Um, this awards teachers up to five hundred dollars for engaging business and class in the classroom. We also have our Reading for Life program. This, we partner with New College Institute and Patrick Henry Community Foundation, to Patrick Henry College Foundation, and we provide volunteer readers and take, uh, and a take-home book for every kindergarten student in Martinsville Henry County and Carlisle. So, our last is a leadership program, or Leadership Scholarships, where we'll provide scholarships for boys and girls state, um, the leadership program that high school, um, students in Martinsville Henry County are able to attend. So, foundation, um, you know, I'm gonna skip here, so we'll talk about the Partnership and Excellence Grants. And I know that was one of the things Callie and I talked about, because the deadline to apply is coming up. And this is something that's always, um, really fun for our, uh, for our committee, because we get to read through all the, um, grant applications, and we get so many very creative, um, applications that it's really fun. It's really exciting to see what our educators are doing in the classroom and what they're needing the funds for. As I said, um, you know, they can apply for up to five hundred dollars fees in the classroom. And the program was designed to encourage, facilitate, recognize, and reward innovative and creative school and business partnerships or collaborations in the classroom. So, with this, um, levels of instruction, uh, K through twelve, and then also our post-secondary education in Martinsville Henry County, and the educator within that is eligible to apply. We do have a very, what we call, and I hate using the word simple, because our teachers are beyond being able to do simple, but we have a very easy application, because we want, um, our educators to apply for these monies. Uh, we want to be able to give this back to the community. Um, we're fortunate that we do have great support with both of the fundraisers, and it's, um, I know for myself, and I think for a lot of the folks that, that participate in, and it's rewarding to know where the dollars are going to. Um, so, we do have that coming up. It is, we got, the deadline is October twenty-seventh. So, I'll just remind our teachers, um, that it's coming up, and we're hoping that we'll get, um, a lot of fun, or a lot of applications, so that we can fund things. We do have a little extra money set to the side this year, because we did not, um, during COVID, we did not fund every year as we had been. So, we're looking forward to a big year this year, and hopefully we get a lot of, um, applications in. I know one question we get is, a lot of people want to know what the difference is between our, um, foundation and the city schools endowment fund. And so, the Education Foundation is not intended to endowed, endow funds. Money raised, we will put to work immediately, um, back into the classrooms and, uh, for our mission. So, all public schools, private schools, um, K through twelve and post-secondary are welcome to apply, as long as they're in Martinsville Henry County. And I've kinda rolled through that, but does anybody have any questions about the Education Foundation or about the PI grants or any of our programs?
No, we certainly appreciate the PI grants, because we take advantage of them. Uh, just really would like to thank the organization for making those grants available. They are grants.
Yes.
Uh, you don't have to pay those bad.
No.
So, we certainly thank you for the opportunity you did, and gives out numbers.
Oh, we, we enjoy it, and like I said, it's always exciting every year to get, um, get the applications in and see. I know we've had things, um, you know, one of the middle school teachers one time, you know, she got a grant to do the climbing wall. She was a PE teacher. She won the lecture. The kids knew that, um, you know, there's more act, things to be active. It's not just running or playing football, those type of things. There's a lot of different ways that you can do that. You know, we've had economic, um, education groups where the kids, um, had to learn, you know, they earned money throughout the week for different things in the classroom. Then at the end of the week, you know, they have to decide, am I gonna save it for the big prize? Or am I gonna spend it this week for on something smaller? So, it's always fun, and it's exciting for us to see what's happening in the classrooms, and we're thrilled to be able to be a part of it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you, Sharon.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have our Virginia School Board Association Academy Award presentation. Ms. Smith?
I will be presenting the awards, the Academy Awards for the V S B A. Um, these awards are given, um, on a different annual or two-year basis. Um, for a school board member that has fifteen credits in one year, you get a certificate of resignation. Um, twenty-four credits in a year, you get an award of achievement with a bronze pin. Uh, forty-eight credits in two years, you get an award of excellence with a silver pin, and an award of honor. Um, the sixty-six credits in two years in a gold pin, and then an award of distinction is a starfish pin and eighty-four credits, um, in two years. Um, so, we have some awards to give out today to some of our members. Um, we have Anthony Jones, who was a previous school board member. He's not here today. He is receiving an award of recognition. Uh, we have Donna Diller, um, previous board chair. Um, she is receiving the excellence award and receiving a silver pin. Uh, we have Emily Parker, who is a previous board member who's not present, um, receiving an award of recognition. Um, Jim Woods, who is a previous board member who is receiving an award of recognition. And then current, um, vice chair, we have Michael Williamson, um, who is receiving, um, a recognition award. Uh, we have, um, Myanna Smith, the clerk, who's receiving the honor award and a gold pin.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, Yvonne Givens, our board chair, the achievement and a bronze pin. And, um, Dr. Zetan, the superintendent, achievement and a bronze pin. That's all I have.
Well, thank you, and thank you to all those who presented the things to receive awards. All right. Information agenda. We have, is it Bully Prevention Month this weekend? This weekend? This week? Oh, I can't talk this month. Weekend, month. And we have a Virginia School Board proclamation about the bully prevention. Do I need to read this, or is someone gonna present it for us?
She's gonna read it.
Okay. Dr. Tarpley.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Question Scott, and I will share some information about, uh, bullying prevention month. School board members, superintendents, teachers, and parents play a critical role in creating a climate where bullying is not tolerated. It has been proven that when adults and children stand together, bullying ends. This is why the National Bullying Prevention Center has declared, and V S B A have declared, October to be Bullying Prevention Month. Childhood bullying is a significant problem nationwide. It can cause absenteeism, mental and physical stress, poor school performance, low self-esteem, and in some cases, student violence. One out of every five students, that's twenty percent, reported bullying being electronically, bullied electronically in the last year, according to the Center for Disease Control in two thousand and twenty-one. This means that upwards of thirteen million school-aged children are bullied each year. Our go, our goal at Martinsville City Public Schools is to promote kindness, acceptance, and inclusion by creating a safe and positive school learning environment where every student understands that bullying is unacceptable and will not be tolerated. The Anti-Bullying Campaign unites communities nationwide to educate and raise awareness of bullying prevention. Martinsville City Public Schools students will have special lessons and guidance classes about developing character traits, bullying, the dangers of drugs, and making good choices. Bullying-free pleasures, pledges are signed by each student. School announcements focus on kindness and motivational speakers, speakers encourage students to make good choices. Our schools will finish the month with Red Ribbon Week by promoting a bullying-free and drug-free school. Each school has planned activities and themes, and I'll just review some of these activities that the schools are planning for this month. Out of Paris has invited a guest speaker. His name is Mark Nizer, who will, um, be a motivational speaker for one of their students. They're also planning celebrations and recognitions for Red Ribbon Week. At Patrick Henry, counselors are implementing classroom lessons on bullying prevention. They are celebrating Red Ribbon Week, Spirit Week, and they've also posted signs and, and putting up bulletin boards for, uh, anti-bullying. The middle school, they're, um, they have a nine-eight-eight hotline flyer that's posted around the school. Um, for those students who feel uncomfortable sharing verbally with their counselors, they have, um, a red box that's located, that's locked and located in the cafeteria where students can place, um, messages and notes to school counselors. Uh, they also have an online reporting that's accessible for twenty-four hours. It can be done from any device, anywhere. On October fourth, they had a national walk to school with students, um, including posters being carried by the students representing bullying prevention. Each week, they're sending anti-bullying video, videos to all teachers to share during their homerooms, followed by a question of the week from the video. Each student who participates will be, uh, their names will be put in a drawing to earn a prize at the end of that week. They also have an anti-bullying pledge that would be placed in the cafeteria for each student to sign. Each student who participates will create, uh, a bully, anti-bullying poster that will be placed around the school. And, um, Ms. Scott will share some things that this morning at the high school.
So, we have this thing that we're really excited about. The student council, um, came up with it mostly on their own. Um, and we're doing like a culture day on October nineteenth, um, and people can share different things about their culture, um, where they come from, like where their families come from. Um, we're doing this really neat video. Um, it's like what I wish my classmates knew about me. Um, and so, some students are choosing to share why they may cover their hair, uh, why they don't eat certain foods, why, um, they celebrate different holidays, um, all that sort of thing. Um, and we're also doing a separate one, um, that's not related to culture day, that's just in general, like what I wish people knew about me, um, what I wish that my teachers knew about me, what I wish that my classmates knew, um, trying to just increase like empathy among students. Like maybe I eat this for lunch because, you know, like my grandma's from Vietnam, et cetera, et cetera. I don't wanna spoil it. It's gonna be really exciting. Um, um, student council has been making some posters to hang up around the school. We also have, um, the student Instagram. Only I can log into that, so, um, sometimes kids can report bullying that way if they're more comfortable typing. Um, they can, we have like the email set up for them. Um, sorry, I've ripped my notes down on my phone. I'm trying to think I'm texting. Um, the nurse did a sticky note activity where everybody wrote like a motivational quote, um, or something like that on a sticky note, and they're all around the school. Um, Mr. Kidd and I have been working on some videos, um, 'cause the kids like videos where I look foolish. Um, and, and we're explaining like different types of bullying, like what is considered bullying, like certain things that you do, you maybe don't realize are bullying, but that's bullying, um, and the constant, the potential consequences that can come. So, in one, um, video, I know like, oh, poor CJ Tally doesn't get into college because he was bullying, and it's on his report and stuff. Um, but it's, it's just fake. It's not real. Um, and then we have, um, the compliment challenge that SCA does, where, um, we talk about kind of giving somebody a compliment and how you really don't know how that like could affect their day. Um, somebody could be having like really not so good of a day, and you get, um, like a compliment from someone. Um, I know in the video, there's, for example, um, a little girl, or a young lady tells me, you know, like, oh, you look, your outfit's really cute. And I'm like, wow, like, I'm having a really rough day. Like that really made my day. So, we're really just going over like the little things you can do that kind of can negatively impact or positively impact, um, the people around you. So, that's it.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to add one item to the information agenda. Last month, we recognized our media award, and unfortunately, no one could be here, but we'd like to again take the opportunity to praise you and thank you for receiving the media award from us, and we appreciate all the positive coverage you have done, and congratulations.
Thanks, everyone. And we really appreciate you so much. Um, your stories are always very vivid and active. That's important. That's important, because, you know, media says a lot of things. But, uh, thank you so much for what you do for the city students.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Um, I will need a motion for us to consider, uh, approving the minutes from September eleventh and from September nineteenth, which was our work session with city council, and our financial report ending on September thirtieth. May I have a motion?
Absolutely.
All right, second.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Lkwu?
Yes.
Ms. Lkwu?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Action agenda. Dr. Tarpley again. We have our Special Education Advisory Committee that she's gonna present to us, those individuals.
Hi again. I'm asking our school board to approve our Special Education Advisory Committee members. Each school division is required by state regulations. We have a local Special Education Advisory Committee, which is, members are appointed by the school board. The purpose of the committee is to involve parents, families, and the education of students with disabilities. Uh, CAC is one of many ways, uh, that parents can provide their input to ensure the best possible outcomes for our students. Our CAC meet, uh, will meet four times this year. We've already met one time. That was on September twenty-first. We will have another meeting on November sixteenth, February fifteenth, and April eighteenth. The meetings are held here at Central Office at six o'clock. So, we welcome our community, parents, teachers, staff, school board, all our stakeholders to come out and be a part of our CAC meeting. So, I'm asking the board to, uh, appoint our members.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the members that Dr. Tarpley has presented to us for this year's Special Education Advisory Committee. All right. Any discussion? Hall of favor?
Uh.
All right. Thank you very much. Dr. Tally, Superintendent's Board.
Thank you, Ms. Givens. Um, I wanted to say we had a very busy March last night. Uh, enjoyed the walk towards the school board at the high school. And those still saw a lot of things and things. Also brought back, I think, a lot of memories too. Uh, the building seemed to be in, in great shape, even though there's some capital improvements. And I want to thank Travis and Jay for walking with us and helping us understand the history of some of the projects. And, uh, I want to thank city council again for driving those capital, uh, funds. Met with Mr. Glenn Adams, the interim, uh, city manager, who we believe in a short term. We've enjoyed working with him. Uh, he's done a great job of just bridging, uh, things between government and education, Travis and myself, and that monthly. Uh, we're real happy to receive the new city manager again. We'll, Travis and I will meet with both of them tomorrow at seven o'clock. Uh, because again, that's something basically traditionally to meet every month and talk about finances, needs, and, uh, any expectations or whatever. So, we're looking forward to meeting with both of them tomorrow. I want to appreciate, uh, lots of asking for college favor, that was well attended, and a lot of young people talk about that, and that's good, because as members of Abbott, especially, I desire, and as a member of that National Board, is to push young people into college and to make opportunities for them if they want that, or some type of licensure in terms of CTE, uh, that will be gang, uh, make them gang and poor. I was impressed with that. I think we're gonna have more, uh, young people going to the armed services, uh, this year. That was very impressive. Anytime our young people want to, uh, again, serve our country, I think it's, it's just always good. Uh, had a great time at this school board, city council meeting, and, uh, you know, a lot of communications was had, and, uh, looking forward to, to working on some of the progressive ideas that we have, especially what we wanted to in terms of schools, uh, and expanding into the community, and also, uh, having available resources, uh, for our schools. Region six superintendents, we met and, uh, had a great meeting with the state superintendent. Talked about some things. Now there's a budget passed. Information is slowly trickling down. Um, and now actually it's time to prepare for, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five biennial, uh, budget. It's almost time for the budget, uh, the governor to, to give this recording in December, uh, but we feel good about where we are. Uh, was invited to attend the Chatmose class of nineteen eighty-three, Martin class of nineteen eighty-three. Had a great, great time there. There's a lot of mentioning of Coach Husky Hall. A lot of them remember him, because that's how they learned to, to drive us in. And I also remember the person that ran into the fence, uh, at the high school, but it was, it was a great meeting. Unfortunately, over thirty-two members of that class of nineteen eighty-three are deceased, and, uh, that's just amazing when you look at forty years. Uh, and, uh, that was just a great program. PBIS, uh, had a great first meeting, and, uh, one of the things we noticed that we're actually ahead of where we were in some areas in attendance, which is good, because there's a state commission just on school attendance. Uh, I think there's still about six thousand students missing that people can't find, and it's very important. I want to say, give kudos to our principals, and I talked to them, uh, this morning at our principals' meeting, uh, how we have narrowed them to no-shows in a building. And we want to make sure that, uh, within the next couple of months, we know where everyone is, and we'll, uh, know how to facilitate that withdrawal, what we need to do, because we are accountable for those kids until they register somewhere else. That's still our responsibility. And again, reminding to the per, uh, parents that, uh, school attendance on eighteen is mandatory. It is the law, uh, regardless of what's on the end. Students have to attend school. I think sometimes people forget that. It's not a wish, it's actual law. So, we're getting to a force staff, along with our staff and, uh, so. Uh, Topple Curtis, Colonel Curtis Miller, retired Colonel, and there's a twenty-four thousand dollar military scholarship that's up. And, uh, pass that information on to the high school, uh, to Dr. Dixon and others, and we're hoping that our young people will be in competition with that, uh, which I consider, you know, a good, good sum of money, and it's recurring. It occurs every year. So, we're hoping we can be involved in that. Enjoyed the career fair and chatter. Went up both days. Uh, I want to thank all the teachers for chaperoning, and I heard my favorite words I like to hear every year. I don't know if they're pulling my word, my, my leg, brother, but I heard my favorite words again this year. Your students are the best behaved students they've found. And I've heard the teachers should go every year, but hey, that's sad to us. And I was just so excited, uh, that the kids enjoyed it. Uh, I had to get on teachers instead of, that's no set of children. I have to tell Mark about that. I had to get more teachers than kids, but the, the kids really enjoyed it, and, uh, they got some livestock, building, uh, lasers, uh, rope climbing. I don't think they're gonna do that. Telegram, uh, electrician, uh, all kinds of stuff. It was cool. And, uh, life-saving techniques. I think some of them let the dummy die unfortunately. Uh, but all kinds of hands-on. I think it was over a hundred some stations that the, the young people. I want to thank Callie, of course, she's everywhere. Uh, she helped cover that and, uh, and took me in the Achilles' heel as part of it. Uh, met with Jay Dickens and Travis and Jay Eames again, and we looked at some of the, uh, facilities, uh, uh, working on getting a group together to do facilities, study, and maybe look at some projects of, uh, paying high school track, uh, looking at the gym and some other things. Uh, so, getting, in the process of getting together a group. Uh, and I want to thank, uh, Lester Home Center also for, for sparking interest in this. As you know, we had a committee, the cabinet knows, because, uh, they were drafted to help me serve them uh, prior to the pandemic, but during the pandemic, yeah, and, uh, even hit board members on it. But again, we're, we're gonna recruit that and bring that back, so that we can add to our facility expansion. Uh, R and P month, uh, Callie and I went over and reviewed some of the art that was there on, on display. Again, uh, we have outstanding artwork, not only from our students, but also our teachers. So, we appreciate people in our entirety, and others who allowed us to, to have that on display. Uh, went up this, uh, week to UVA with a number, a panel there and talked about, uh, education in terms of Martinsville City, along with, uh, three other superintendents throughout the state, and, uh, had a great panel discussion, again, um, UVA and Dr. Robinson. Uh, just, and send that congratulations to the caliber of students and the students that we're producing here uh, in this area. And I thought that was a great thing, even though I'm gonna text you, because Gung Ho is a classic, uh, two thousand and nine, but you wanted to make sure we mentioned uh, that they're pleased with the caliber of students that are coming to UVA, uh, from, from this area. And then finally, uh, I want to thank, uh, Dr. Dixon, uh, Dr. Downey, when, uh, I think Dr. Toppley, Ms. Williams when, and just your, uh, blanket, you went down to sing the national anthem uh, for the new, uh, city manager. I understand the program was, was outstanding. I appreciate our delegation coming. I was in Charlottesville, uh, heading UVA at the time, couldn't have attained, but I want to thank all you who went. And for one, I said. all you went and for one understanding, young man did outstanding, uh, job. He's one of our actors and by the way, you can see the play is coming up soon, uh, at the high school and, uh, he's been one of our leading actors there, uh, very talented, uh, and affiliated family, but also very talented and voice. But, uh, as you can see, been burping this evening and, uh, we really appreciate everyone's support and covering all these things. We have a lot of great things coming up.
All right, thank you. Matters from the board. Ms. Blackbaker, do you have anything? Uh, Ms. Blackwell?
Yeah.
Mr. Williams?
I want to say thanks to Yana, I saw her at Oktoberfest, or, or, or was it your s- daughter, your son, your daughter who worked in?
My daughter and, um, Sarah Casey, the HR specialist.
They were down there working Oktoberfest and it was really, really good seeing them there. My kids are excited to see them there and, uh, that's all.
Mr. Williamson?
Um, I wanted to give a plug for the band. They're currently doing their fundraiser, selling band fruit and in the past years prior to the pandemic, they would go out and be more likely to solicit, go door to door. Now most of that is done online. You can order your band fruit, uh, and Mr. Joyce has and I'm sure Callie has got it on our website as she's filing it. And, uh, you can go in there and order and if you want the fruit to go to a certain student for the, the part they make, you can mention the student. If you don't have one in general that you'd like to receive those extra funds, then they will assign it to those who need it for raising money for their trip in the spring. And you can order fruit through the middle of November and it'll arrive just in time for the holidays. Um, also I wanted to thank city council for, and having the joint meeting and encouraging us to do that. They gave us an opportunity to present some things they may or may not have known about our school system, that they may or may not have known about how we do certain things and how we go about. And Dr. Downing had a lovely presentation explaining a lot of those things along with, uh, Carrie did his presentation again, so they could understand the things that were not presented maybe in the newspaper articles or other things where it gave us an opportunity to show, uh, uh, the full picture or the big picture. Uh, want to thank everybody who came that evening. We had most of our staff there and we appreciate that. I would like to also thank our staff for doing such a good job and the school year seems to be going off well and we're on a good foot and we're looking forward to the holidays and all those things we have coming up. And when is the play, the musical at the high school?
October twenty-first. Twenty-first. What is twenty-first? Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. And we have?
You have two o'clock time and seven o'clock time.
Okay, and we have the votes to come out for that and support our students. Okay, moving on to reminder of dates. We have tomorrow evening, the Chamber of Commerce Leadership Dinner at six o'clock being held at Chat Moss Country Club. The end of the nine weeks is on Friday, which will be a student holiday and a, uh, teacher work day professional development. Next Tuesday, we have a governor's school board meeting. Dr. Tally will meet with them at two and I will go in and meet with them at two-thirty. Uh, November seventh is election day, which is a student holiday. Most of our schools are used as polling precincts and we'll have a teacher work day that day and then our next school board meeting will be November thirteenth. Do we have any unregistered citizen comments? Okay, any communications? No? Okay, we're moving right on. All right. I need a, a motion for going into closed session and who is supposed to read? Mr. Williamson, you'll read that for us, please, pursuant of section?
Good. Pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one A, the code of Virginia, I moved at the board convenes in closed session with the purpose of discussing the following specific matters. Discussion and consideration of the evaluation, employment, assignment and reassignment of employees of the Martinsville City Schools as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one A, one of Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Ms. Blackbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
All right, close session.